Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is April the 30th, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on April 9th, 2024 be adopted.
Moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Would remind members of disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. See none noted? We have no presenting petitions or presentations, so we'll move to Section 5, Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Mover and secander please. Counselor Widger and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Section 6, Reports of Committee, excuse me, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. 6-1 from Counselor Shiger regarding the Terrace Lodge redevelopment fundraising committee, community representative appointment, Jamie Chapman. Counselor Shiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think that this report is truly self-explanatory. Jamie Chapman has been an excellent contributor to the committee, and we're in the last mile of this marathon, so I think it would be a shame not to include her in this last part. So it is her wish to continue on the committee. We just need a bit of a formality today to allow her to be appointed as a community member.
Thank you very much for that. Does anyone have any questions? We'll have the motion, please.
Resolved that Elgin County Council reappoint Jamie Chapman as a community representative on the Terrace Lodge redevelopment fundraising committee for the remainder of the current term of council or until the end of the fundraising campaign.
Do we have a mover and secander, please? Counselor Latham? And I thought I saw Counselor Corbett. All in favor? That's carried. 6-2, the acting manager of planning, PS 24-7, summary of proposed PPS 2024. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, members of council. And before you today to provide an update on a matter that was before County Council last summer, and that's with respect to the draft provincial policy statement. Council may recall that last summer, the province of Ontario, the provincial government released a revised provincial policy statement. The provincial policy statement is the province's statement on land use policy, so it's kind of, well, we have local official plans and we have the county official plan. All of these are governed by at the very, very top, a provincial policy statement. It's a fairly strategic document, it's about 60 pages long, and it establishes the policy planning framework for municipalities in Ontario. If council will recall, last summer, a revised version of that was released, and quite controversially, I might add, that was proposing to remove things such as the requirements for comprehensive reviews at the time of settlement area boundary expansions. It was also proposing to permit a belief up to three additional dwelling units on farm properties. That was probably one of the most controversial provisions that was being proposed at that time. County Council had provided comments, along with, I believe, most other municipalities in Ontario, or at least upper tier municipalities in Ontario, to the province. The province subsequently, based on the feedback that you have received, I, to use the term phrase, they put a pin in that PPS and gone back and revisited some of the proposed policy changes that they were, they had made. So we've all been kind of waiting for this, for this to be re-released. So what we now have is we have a re-released draft provincial policy statement in front of us, and the commenting period ends this month. If I could be frank, in my experience with previous issuances of provincial policy statements, when they get to the point of having a, a small turnaround on the commenting period, that's usually a sign, in my experience, that the province is getting close to releasing that document, and that they're quite comfortable that it's in that final state. So I, while it's not an official line that you'll find out there, I would suggest that this is likely the province's last, last go-round of getting comments before they release the new document. For councils, for councils' benefit, we've had the opportunity to review the draft, this revised draft provincial policy statement. And I would note, in terms of the issues that were raised by County Council and I think most other municipalities last year, I would note that the most controversial provisions that were being proposed, which would have allowed the three additional residential lots to be created on farm lots, those proposals have been abandoned by the provincial government. So essentially, the lot creation policies would remain the same in this new draft of the PPS as they currently exist. And we've also seen the province get rid of one of the other controversial provisions that was being proposed, was to establish a minimum land budget or minimum land needs for urban areas of at least 25 years, and that was as opposed to the existing policies that state that municipalities can plan for up to 25 years of growth. There's still been some loosening of those policies, so now municipalities are permitted to, to, to budget up to 30 years of land for their urban areas or to develop land budgets for up to 30 years of growth. So we have a minimum, we now must budget for a minimum of 25 years of growth to a maximum of 30 years of growth. And the other major change that was proposed in the last provincial policy statement was essentially the removal of the requirement for a comprehensive review at the time of examining our urban boundary expansions. For County Council's benefit, the comprehensive review is just the fancy name that they give to a very large and involved study that's required of municipalities or private proponents when they're looking at expanding a settlement area's boundary. That was, there's quite an extensive list of criteria that need to be met in the current provincial policy statement. Much of that criteria would be loosened or eliminated in the, in the new draft provincial policy statement. From my perspective, when this is being proposed last time to County Council, the only concern that I would raise on the part of County Council is this likely will result in additional applications for expansions of urban boundaries at the, at the, at the local level, and additional pressures on both the local councils and county councils to consider urban boundary expansions with those, with the criteria to permit them having been loosened up. Notwithstanding that, I will always freely admit and state on the record that the, the requirements for a comprehensive review at the, as they currently exist in the PPS were sometimes actually quite onerous, particularly in rural communities or in smaller, smaller settlement areas like we have in, in, in Elgin. So there are some benefits to seeing some of those rules loosened up, but there's also, we also have to remember that we're likely to experience some additional pressures from, from development proponents looking to expand urban areas. Those additional pressures come with additional infrastructure pressures and capital works pressures that will be placed on local councils. With that, that essentially summarizes kind of the major changes that are being proposed. Again, the most controversial ones were the, or the, the permissions to allow up to three residential lots on agricultural parcels that's been removed. The requirements for, to conduct a comprehensive review have been removed. There are some pros and cons to that. I'm certainly happy to answer any specific questions that council may have. And we now have a loosened up land budget requirement. So again, we don't, we're not just required to plan for up to 25 years of growth. We're required to plan for a minimum of 25 years of growth into a maximum of 30 years of growth, so that it does loosen, loosen up some of those requirements as well. With that, and last year, County Council did decide that they wanted to submit a comment letter to the province for consideration when finalizing the PPS. This option certainly does still exist to County Council. If they would like, county, our staff, county staff are prepared to put together a comment letter under the name of the ward for submission, that we'd need some direction on what matters County Council would like to see addressed in that comment letter. But otherwise, otherwise, it looks like we can expect a new PPS likely to be in place in the, in the coming months. With that, Mr. Warden, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any direction that County Council might have on this matter.
Thank you for that review, Paul. Certainly appreciate it. And I'm going to open the floor to any questions that members have, any concerns? Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess the only concern is on the expansion to 30 years. None of us have a crystal ball. That being said, Southold, we do have a developer that is pushing very hard outside of our boundary to get that acceptance, and the biggest problem we have is wastewater capacity at this point, and how you're going to deal with that. Know the province has given us money for this go-around, but if that money's going to be there in the future is a, is a huge concern, because a lot of the stuff that we're looking at is in the future, and who's going to pay for it?
Fair comment. Thank you very much for that. Do you have any rebuttal for that, Paul? Any insight?
No, Mr. Warden. I, I'd share the same concerns. However, the, again, the, at the end of the day, the primary concern is that there's going to be those additional pressures to, to look at urban boundary expansions. And it's, it's one thing to look at an urban boundary expansion. It's one thing to just expand and redesignate those lands. That's typically not the end of the world. But from the municipal perspective, the, the rub is really providing the services to those lands, and it will create additional capital, capital pressures on councils to, to service those, to service those lands with water, sewer, roads, and all the rest of that fun stuff. So I, I don't have much of a rebuttal, except to share those, those same concerns that this will create additional pressures for, for local councils and County Council.
Okay, perhaps maybe the, put it on, consider it another way. What are council's thoughts of expressing those particular concerns back as a comment? That we certainly appreciate, you know, the lessening of some of these, or resolving some of our earlier concerns, but we are still, perhaps we are anticipating a certain amount of anxiety moving forward with respect to the pressures that the local municipal partners are going to, to receive regarding the, the boundary adjustment issue. You know, settlement boundaries, shall we call it that? Let's separate the issues here. What are your thoughts? I don't think there's any harm in expressing that this will put some more pressure on the local councils to achieve this. If I note through the, through what Paul's report is suggesting, that there are certain criteria that have to be met, yes, do we have infrastructures to support that? And then turn it on its head, who's going to be responsible for putting that in there? Is that municipality, or is that up to the developer to expand that? So there's a lot of anxiety, I would say. Is it worth it for us to put a comment forward? I don't see the downside risk of not, or of putting a comment forward, personally. Paul, how does that sound? Can we accommodate something like that?
Certainly, Mr. Warden. I, I, I'm hoping I could catch kind of the, I think, kind of the, the tone that, that County Council would like to get across, that we can certainly put a comment letter together that's supportive of the proposed changes overall, that expresses some, some level of concern or anxiety around the pressures that will put on local municipalities to receive and approve those applications. And I would suggest we could go one step further by also including some language in that letter with respect to ensuring consistent funding of municipal infrastructure is examined to make sure that municipalities can keep pace with the, with the growth pressures that will likely result out of this. And perhaps that might be, might be a way to approach that and to express some of those concerns to, to, to the provincial government.
Yes, I, I think that would be prudent. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Just another thought. If my memory serves me right, right now, Elgin County is in a surplus position overall. How does that affect the 30-year plan? Are we still at that level? Do we need to increase, or are we still at the 30-year level?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We've not done a detailed crunching of the numbers on that, but kind of our cursory review of what those numbers look like is that likely is that the municipalities in Elgin overall, we still have a deficit of land, a current deficit of lands that exists in the town of Elmer. They are short a, they, they are particularly a residential land supply in Elmer, but otherwise, the, the surplus that exists outside of the town of Elmer from our cursory review should be sufficient enough for the 30-year planning horizon. But we would, we'd be looking to double-check those numbers upon approval of the PPS to make sure. And we, I guess the other end of that too, is with, particularly with respect to the new official plan, is the, there will be a requirement in the new official plan for county staff to report back to County Council on a annual basis about how much land there is for growth across, across the county. So again, a couple notes there. One, we do have a one deficiency that exists in the, the town of Elmer with respect to their land supply. All the other local municipalities are oversupplied, and our review of the, up to the 30-year planning horizon is that we're likely still oversupplied and have a satisfactory land supply up to that 30, up to that 30 years.
Okay, Deputy Warden?
Thank you. So I know this is going to become an issue in Southold, because we're being pushed very, very hard to increase in the Talbotville area. And I don't want to step on other communities' toes, especially Elmer, when they have a shortage. So this is going to get possibly ugly, and I don't know how we prevent that, because we, we know the couple of developers in our area have a close tie with provincial government. I don't know what the solution is there, but.
Very good point. Yes, I'm not aware of a mechanism for land swapping between local municipal partners other than boundary adjustments. It's a long ways to go on that one. It would seem to me that let's, let's exert some influence where we can at this point, and that is expressing just a general anxiety on the, the settlement boundary issue. And as just, as they say, we'll have to tackle the others as they come along. Any other comments from members? Does it look satisfied we're heading in the right direction? Okay. Have you been wordsmithing something out there for us? I'm sorry, Counselor Latham.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. I was just, I, I noticed that there may be an allowance for three buildings, three houses to go on farmland, on farms. Did, did he not say that?
No, it's removed.
Because at the moment, West Elgin has two. We'd allow another house to go near a farmhouse, but as, when sale comes up, they have to be sold as one. You can't split. And I was just wondering, if they were going to change them to three, you know, are they going to split them, or are they going to sell them as a whole?
Mr. Warden might be able to.
Please, Paul, go ahead. I was going to jump in. Go ahead.
My apologies. I, I just, I, I, a point of clarification on that. And so there's, there's two, there's two matters, separate matters that are being noted there. One was under the original provincial policy statement, there was a proposal to, to allow off of every farm the creation of three lots. So that, that proposal has been abandoned. However, in the new provincial policy statement, and if I can be quite frank, I'm not sure if I necessarily see the rationale behind this, otherwise to create some greater certainty or clarity as to how the additional dwelling unit provisions of the planning, the new additional dwelling unit provisions of the planning act are to be applied, that they have stated within that provincial policy statement that where we do have a farm lot that exists within that farmhouse, two additional units can be created, essentially, you know, when we're talking about above a garage or in a basement or at the side. And I would suggest that has more to do with, with, with clarifying the existing permissions under the planning act and how they are to be, to be applied in the rural area. And to, 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 to address the issue that was raised by, by, by the council member, that will likely be an ongoing issue ultimately as to how we ensure that those additional dwelling units, when they're created on a farm parcel, are not over the long term able to be severed off. And that will likely require changes to both local official plans and the county official plan to address that and to develop policies that state when these dwelling units are created, when you create an apartment above a garage on a, you know, on a farm parcel, we cannot create a lot and sever that, that garage and that, 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 that apartment off. That will require some changes to the local official plan and the county official plan. It muddies the waters slightly on how we deal with it over the long term. But I do believe that we do likely have sufficient tools to, to address that as best we can. And again, that's the kind of preventing the, the severance of these additional dwelling units. And I apologize if I'm, and I'm jumping ahead with, and because I'm touching on a few things there. Changes to the Planning Act that have recently occurred, change to the provincial policy statement. Unfortunately, we, we're in quite a bit of a, a time of flux, and I think every member of council knows this, that we've been, for lack of a better term, kind of inundated with changes to provincial legislation in the Planning Act and provincial policy over the past couple of years. So I know it can be kind of sometimes difficult to keep up with those changes, and I, I say that even from my own perspective, it can be difficult to keep up. But I just know, I would want to note that distinction. The, the, the proposal to allow the three lots in the, in the ad area has been removed, but they clarified that additional dwelling units, up to two additional dwelling units on a farm parcel are permitted.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the, the answer there, Paul. Certainly appreciate it. Any other comments, questions?
Resolved that the report titled PS 24-7, summary of proposed PPS 2024 from the Director of Legal Services and Acting Manager of Planning dated April 30th, 2024 be received and filed, and that a comment letter be sent thanking the province for taking into consideration previous comments and expressing concern that adjustments to settlement area boundaries will pose servicing and infrastructure challenges for municipalities.
All right, everyone satisfied with that motion? We have a mover and secander then. Okay, Counselor Hens? Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Have a great day, everyone.
You too. Section 6-3, Manager of Library Services, Elgin County Library, 2023 Performance. Natalie, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, and through you to council members. So this presentation before you outlines the library's performance and usage trends in 2023. And in the following slides, we'll present to you the library's data as an infographic and then review each of the sections, and then lastly, proposed and service goals for 2024. So this infographic demonstrates how residents of the county of Elgin have used library services, both physically and virtually, in 2023 and across six key library service areas. So this slide shows the library's total checkouts, which includes circulation of the physical collections as well as the digital collections. And you can see it has increased slightly over 2022. Also, you can see that the digital collection has experienced a greater increase in circulation at 16% than the print collection at 5%. So this graph also demonstrates how circulation has steadily increased since the onset of the pandemic in 2020 and how the library continues to recover well post-pandemic. So here, we have our library users. You can see that not only has our library membership increased over 2022, but the number of new members has significantly increased over last year. And if you remember, both of these were service goals for 2023, so we're exceeding both of those. So this success is influenced by the library's fine free initiative, which is increasing access to materials for existing cardholders and also increasing appeal for new members. Also, a cardholder marketing campaign with St. Thomas Public Library has promoted our reciprocal borrowing arrangement with them and has attracted new cardholders as well. So this slide is a snapshot of the library's online use. So as you can see, all of these services, whether accessed in branch or at home, have experienced increases in usage over 2022. So specifically, so this graph shows that the number of Wi-Fi sessions and computer use sessions in library branches have both increased significantly, so up 23 and 46%, respectively. And in response to the impact that the network disruption had on these services in the previous year in 2022. So this service area has seen a significant increase over 2022. As if you remember, 2022 was that first year that branches were open all 12 months of the year post-pandemic, even if with modified service as a result of the pandemic or the network disruption. So this is evident in the dramatic increase in computer users, up 46% over 2022. However, you can also see that the holds placed by library staff in branches saw a small decrease, 4% over 2022, and this will be addressed in our 2024 service goals. So this line shows our total digital checkouts by format and also the variety of our digital offerings. So as you can see, the total number of digital checkouts has increased over 2022 and has increased, so 16% over 2022 and 130% over five years, and continues to grow with the movement to an online work and lifestyle post, post-pandemic. However, the number of checkouts has slightly, only slightly increased over 2021, as you can see from the graph there, and as a result of the network disruption in April of 2022, which had a significant impact on our digital performance in that year. So other factors contributing to the increase in checkouts include marketing and promotional campaigns by library staff, both online and in-person, product improvements and developments in library user trends. So with regards to programs, this service area has seen a significant increase over 2022, and with March break 2022 marking the first opportunity to provide in-person staff-led programs at library branches since the pandemic in 2020. So library staff continue to develop successful program and partnership offerings, both for branches individually and system-wide, and drive the growth in program attendance, which has resulted in incredible crease, increases, so 45% and 46% over 2022. So I will note that a further update on library programs will be presented in the coming weeks. So with regards to service goals, we're proposing the following. So the first, to target holds placed in branch as part of in-person service and see a 1% increase there, and to also target membership and see a 2% increase in our total active library members. So these, the recommendations are before you, so this concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, Natalie. No, it's great to see the increase pretty much across the board with everything. It's, that's good news. When we discontinued the fine program, are you seeing books are coming back still? And not, that hasn't become an issue at all?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, to respond to the question. Thank you to Deputy Warden Jones. Yes, you know what? We have a number of strategies in place to try and sort of minimize the risk of having materials that aren't coming back. So we've increased our, our notices and our frequency of our notices as well. So far, we've managed to maintain, you know, not having to replace as many books. So we'll keep kind of assessing. And I'll be providing another report actually on this current phase of fine free in the coming weeks.
Natalie, can we go back to digital checkouts? And perhaps just explain it for me. You've got 7,714 database sessions, but it says it's down 47%. And yet, we know that our electronic side is increasing in use. What's that tell us?
Sorry, I'm just going to reference a slide. Okay, sorry, with regards to digital checkouts, sorry, Mr. Warden. Okay, sorry, with regards to digital checkouts, sorry, Mr. Warden.
It's database sessions, says it's down forty seven percent over twenty two. I was just curious, what what does that, what does that mean?
So when we're talking about database sessions, what that means, if you're thinking about, there we go, thank you. So the seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen database sessions. So those database sessions are the number of sessions that library users are using when they're using our our databases like Novelist or EBSCO or any kind of online learning databases that we have. Those are the the databases. So every year we kind of assess and and purchase either new databases or or continue with the existing ones. So this would include any of our online database sessions. So this down forty seven percent. I mean, I would think a contributing factor would be changes in user in user trends, maybe changing homeschooling. Yeah, so definitely something to monitor in the coming, in the coming years.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. No, I was just curious because it's a significant change. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, just a couple of comments. And on that, so databases, I, you know, I think are mainly used for research purposes. So you can do a digital checkout of a book without a full database. So I could see, it's it's difficult to pinpoint, but I could see those databases, like sort of research-based session going down while eBooks and and checkouts of eBooks and e-magazines are going up. So not surprised there, but what I wanted to comment on also is that, first off, express my congratulations for setting goals last year and then achieving and exceeding those goals. So I think that's a, that's a great story. And but I also wanted to follow up on my comments from last year because I think it is a great story, but I still feel it's an incomplete story. So it's like reading a really good book. This is like chapter one, and now I'm in the cliffhanger. So I'm still looking for chapter two and chapter three. And and it's not just for entertainment purposes, but it's just to ensure that council is is really well-informed and intentional about service levels and and so on. So what I had suggested last year, and I realized last year when I made those suggestions, was a tumultuous time, and and also I think some of our systems were not fully in place. I now we have a new financial system being implemented, we have an HR system, so things that will give us easily the the data that we're looking for. So so I'm still looking, I think the timing is better now, so I'm going to try again to have chapter two and chapter three. So chapter two, my comment would be to be to add the financial dimension. So for example, if we're increasing, you know, digital checkout by fifty eight percent, but we're increasing our budget by seventy five percent, totally making numbers up. I'm just saying that right now, we don't know. So I could dig up the budget and try to find out, you know, what's the trend on our spending versus, so to me, it just, I think it would be easier to add a financial chapter to put this increase relative to our spending. And relative perhaps to, there's a lot of benchmarking, there's a lot of data that that is available in other communities to tell us not only the performance, but to tell us if this is a good performance and if this is representing, maybe we're spending more than other areas, but maybe that's what we want. So I just want to be informed and intentional about it. And then chapter three would be about the the population perspective and the reach. So again, so if you're increasing number of users by twenty percent, but your population is increasing by thirty percent, technically, you could argue that's not a good performance. So I don't know, I don't think that's the case, but again, I don't want to assume. So I think it would be, I would really appreciate if if the timing is right, if the systems are in place, if council agrees that that would help us really gauge what looks like a great story and a great performance, just make sure it's triangulated with those other two points so that we can confirm it is. And we can confirm together that this is the level of service we want and the level of investment. And maybe we want to spend more, maybe we want to spend less. And so that would be my recommendation. I don't know if council agrees, if staff feel also that this is reasonable and feasible for next year, that perhaps if we include that as part of the resolution, just to keep track, that just additional metrics would be added for next year. I think that will complete the story and make a full book and a amazing bestseller.
Any additional comments, questions? Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Natalie. I'm looking at the online use, and it's kind of like plateaued again. Is that because more people have computers now, or do we expect it to go back to pre-pandemic levels sometime? Or just curious about the graph here?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Counselor Widner, to answer the question. So yes, you're right, the online use has plateaued a little bit since the pandemic. And you're right, one of the contributing factors could be that folks have their own devices. And maybe they're not coming into the library quite as much as they used to. But we're hoping to to get that usage back up to pre-pandemic levels.
Counselor Slough?
Just to follow up, how are you working on getting that usage up? I'm just curious.
Well, in branch, often, library staff will offer programs on, you know, how to use our online services or, you know, how to access information using the public computers that are available there.
Just to follow up, is that stuff that, are those things that we currently don't do? Just wanted clarification.
And some branches actually do have partnerships with other local organizations as well to offer that type of training, but to be able to offer more training and maybe, you know, reach different groups of users that might benefit a bit more from that training.
Okay, anything else from members? Still, it is a good news story here. There there's some interesting things to glean from this. Just anecdotally, I know that there are crowds of people hanging around the library and even the municipal office in in my community. And I know that they're outside accessing the Wi-Fi, and that's why when I was looking at the database or sessions were down, thinking, okay, so what are they doing? Who knows? Maybe they're gaming out there and using the Wi-Fi to do it. I don't know, and I don't, I don't think we really need to be that intrusive and find out. It was just interesting. So if I'm gathering the consensus of the council, you're looking probably for an establishment of some kind of how about develop metrics to help gauge the success? Or we already have some metrics, but I mean, perhaps enhance additional metrics. You, well, not maybe not manage it well. I'm just waiting for Catherine to. Ready to go? All right.
Resolved that the presentation titled twenty twenty three library performance from the manager of library services dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty four be received and filed, and that additional performance measurement metrics be developed for the twenty twenty four performance report. And that a copy of this presentation be submitted to local municipal partners in the county of Elgin.
Okay. Counselors Shiger will move, and Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Let's move on with six four, Director of Engineering Services, culvert rehabilitation tender number twenty twenty four T thirteen tender award. Welcome, Peter, and perhaps you can explain your hardware. First, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Let's start with the report. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of county council. And as part of the twenty twenty four approved capital budget, tenders were issued for the rehabilitation of culverts. To remind council, the the plan, the strategy that the department utilizes is we look at underground services in advance of future rehabilitation plans for those roadways. So we will be rehabilitating the roads identified in this report in future years of the capital plan. So right now, we're looking at the condition of the existing crossing culverts, and we've identified twenty seven of them to be rehabilitated along these four road sections. We've issued tenders, twelve contractors downloaded those tender specifications and four submitted bids. Those are on the top of page thirty seven, of which Hornblower Excavating, who was the contractor who performed this work for the county last year, was the lowest compliant bid of three hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred dollars. The projected capital budget for this activity was four hundred and eight thousand, so we are expecting a surplus of forty six thousand dollars. The recommendation before you to award the contract to Hornblower Excavating Earth Boring, I should say, excuse me, is before you, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions in regards to this report.
All right, thank you very much for that report. Again, it looks like another good news story coming forward. The fact that we've had experience with the bidder or the lowest bidder has gives a little more comfort level, I think. Any questions or comments from council members? Yes, Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. The, what's the maximum size of the slip liner can we do, like that's comfortable with, that I actually will ask? Because I, I think this is a great technology, and it interests me, because we've got some expensive ones I'd like to see absolute liners. But what would be the maximum size you would be comfortable with?
So in in my experience, we've lined culverts up to two meters in size. They take considerably more work to do. However, they're still a cost-effective approach if the excavation is is very deep and it's on a busy road. For instance, you have to be very mindful in in blocking down the the liner, obviously very conscientious about any hydraulic capacity restrictions you're creating, and you're having to install that grouting in many layers, so you're not floating the pipe inside. We were performing these activities when we still had county road staff back in the early nineties. So this is not new technology. However, it's very cost-effective. For typically, these culvert crossings are two feet, six hundred millimeters in in less in diameter. And those can be accomplished for somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars. That does sound like a lot of money. But in in retrospect, if you're having to excavate a roadway, disturb traffic with traffic control and and build up that roadway conventionally, you're going to be double, triple that that amount of costs. And best efforts are still always going to create that little bit of a bump in the roadway. So this is, this is a way to make a faster process, much less expensive process and less disturbance to to the public. You can go pretty large size with these colors. Thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, shall we deal with the motion, and then we'll hit Peter up for an explanation?
Resolved that Hornblower Earth Boring Incorporated be selected to complete culvert rehabilitations on various roads, tender number twenty twenty four T thirteen at a total price of three hundred and fifty five thousand five hundred dollars, exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Hens and Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Now, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. I'm pleased to present the award that was presented to the county. The county was recognized along with the county's paving contractor for the resurfacing Sunset Road last year in twenty twenty three. Council supported that project through the capital plan. It was a life cycle investment renewal. That roadway was originally rehabilitated in two thousand and seven, so it was due for a resurfacing to extend the service life of the pavement. The project design incorporated many best practices for resurfacing activities, including, for example, echelon paving, where you have two two pavers working in tandem to eliminate the cold joint that's created for for the longevity of the pavement. We tack coded the roadway. We incorporated active transportation cycling lanes to new Ontario Transportation Manual standards. We put in tactile plates for accessibility. We harvested the recycled and reclaimed asphalt for a future project. The list goes on and on, and it was, it was nice to be recognized as the first time the county of Elgin has won this annual municipal paving award.
Well, congratulations, Peter, to you, your department, the Brantco Construction. I mentioned this at the the ex-warden's luncheon the other day, that is just another example of the service level excellence that the county strives to to achieve. And so again, I offer sincere congratulations on that. Okay, thank you very much. Don't lose it. Moving on with six five, the Manager of Administrative Services, Deputy Clerk, the Elgin County Notice Bylaw zero seven twenty nine update.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to county council. This report recommends that council approve proposed changes to the Elgin County Notice Bylaw, which is currently by law oh seven twenty nine. So this is the bylaw that pursuant to Municipal Act section two seventy requires us to adopt and maintain policies in respect to the circumstances in which the municipality provides notice to the public and if notices to be provided, the form, manner, and times that notice is to be given. And it's additionally necessary that we set out reasonable minimum standard requirements, even for those actions which notice requirements are not directly prescribed under the Municipal Act, but it is prudent to do so. So in two thousand and seven, the county, in order to meet these legislative requirements, did adopt Notice Bylaw oh seven twenty nine. So it has been approximately seventeen years since this bylaw has undergone an update. And there have been significant changes to technology that is available to municipalities to use to provide notice, and therefore, many of our notice practices have changed at the county. Additionally, this is a document that the Administrative Services Department uses on a regular basis for determining notice for various actions as contained in Schedule A. And therefore, it's important that it's up to date for us to be able to use. And so there were some sections that we felt required an update due to clarity. So I have recommended several changes to the definition section, largely to include things like the use of electronic mail and also the use of, in the definition of newspaper, we also would like to include online publication. We do have a few great local printed newspapers, but they are declining in numbers. So we want to make sure that we're also able to publish notice online. We did recommend that we remove references to sufficient circulation, just as this term is rather vague and not defined. And also because of the decline in the number of local printed newspapers, it does limit our options in certain areas of the county. Of course, in the east, we do have a great local printed newspaper, but in other areas, it is starting to decline. So it's important that we can use online platforms as well. In the section regarding manner of notice, we do indicate in the old one that we post notice of our agenda on the doors of our local municipal partners. This is something that has fallen out of practice quite a long time ago, well before my time, I imagine, and I've been at the county for fifteen years. So that's something that we do not do anymore, and we thought it would be prudent to remove it from our bylaw. And also, there were certain sections that were less clear, and so we wanted to indicate that the manner and time of notice are all going to be indicated in Schedule A of the bylaw. And there is a section that you'll notice that discusses service interruptions to online methods of notice, not rendering notice void. This was included in the existing bylaw. However, the wording was not as clear and didn't use plain language. So in conjunction with our legal services, we worked on that to make sure that that language was more clear. We also say that this bylaw applies to our local boards and committees, but we don't actually reference our committee bylaw, because at the time this bylaw was adopted, we did not have a committee bylaw. So now we do have a committee bylaw twenty three oh one, which governs notice for agendas of committees and local boards of council. And we thought it was important that this also be included in this bylaw in Schedule A. And we thought it was important that this also be included in this by law in Schedule A. One of the most important things about this change is that we did indicate in this by law that the procedural by law, by law 2041, does govern the time and manner that notice will be provided for our council agendas. However, in that by law, it does indicate that the council agenda will be sent out to council on the Thursday before the Tuesday council meeting, but nowhere in the procedural by law does it indicate when we are required to send post the agenda publicly. Now, for as long as a very, very long time, longstanding practice before my time, we do send the agenda out on the day after we send it to council. So we post it on Friday and send it out to the required stakeholders on the Friday, but nowhere was that codified. So staff do want to continue that practice. However, we would like it to be codified in the notice by law and to be official. And also when we do an update to our procedural by law, which we hope will happen sometime within this calendar year, that that will then be reflected in the procedural by law as well for consistency. And then finally, another change is that we removed a section that refers to any bylaws governing the one third remuneration of council that was deemed to be tax exempt. This was removed by the federal government in 2017, so it is no longer relevant and does not need to be in the by law anymore. So all of the proposed changes to by law 0729 are indicated in red to the attached report. And then a an updated clean copy of the by law is at the end of the council agenda for consideration. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report, Catherine. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments? At times be a change and then we have to change and adopt with them. So good job. Okay, can we have the motion, please?
Resolved that Elgin County Council approve proposed changes to the Elgin County Notice by law.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Henson and Counselor Jiguer will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. Is this a long one, Blaine? Okay. If it's going to be long, I'm going to call for a quick five minute break. We'll recess for five minutes. Recharge your coffee cups. Do what you need to do. Welcome back. Now we are moving on to six six, Chief Administrative Officer. Clerk, the first 90 days on the path forward. Good morning, Blaine.
Good morning, Warden Ketchba and members of council. It unbelievably, but it's almost been 120 days. So over the last little while, I've been collecting my my thoughts and I mentioned to the warden not too long ago that I'd like to have a discussion with council on just what my first few months looked like, what I learned from from those few months and where I think we we should go, some of the projects that I think we should focus on, some of the initiatives that I think we should undertake together. But I think off the start, I'd just like to express my my thanks once again to you, Warden Ketchabon, Deputy Warden Jones and members of council for the opportunity to to join the county. I am thrilled to be here. I've I've enjoyed working with with council and the team here. They're an outstanding group of people. And it's it's refreshing to work with with a council and a group of people that are so dedicated and committed to focusing on the issues and addressing them in a collaborative nature. So that is a very refreshing feeling to to work well together. So thank you for that. So just a little bit on what what we'll talk about today, I will go through some of my approach for the first 90 days, then look at what a little bit of of what lies beyond that. I will talk about what I classify as the pillars of excellence. When I look at how an organization functions, I tend to look at six different areas and focus my thoughts in on those areas. And then I look at two other areas that I classify as enablers of excellence. And the way I'll describe those, and I'll get into a little bit more detail later on, but the way I describe the enablers are they run more horizontal and they're almost woven throughout the pillars of excellence. So if you work diligently and improve those two enablers, then generally the six pillars will also improve because I said they kind of weave themselves throughout those those six areas. We'll talk a little bit about some external factors. I didn't want to focus too much today on those. We're all well aware of some of our external challenges, but I think there's some things that that we do need to focus on. And you'll see some common themes through some of those external factors. And then I'd just like to talk about what what the next little while looks like in 2024, some of the larger initiatives that I think we we need to roll up our sleeves on and work on collaboratively. So what did the first 90 days look like? If anyone has ever read the book, The Seven Habits for Highly Effective People, you'll know one of those habits is seek first to understand and then to be understood. In the words of my mother, just be quiet and listen and you'll learn more. So that's what I tried to do over the first 90 days. I asked a lot of questions. I met with each of you. So thank you for your time and and your contributions and your expressing your thoughts with me. I met with each of our executive management team on a number of occasions. Now we continue to meet every other week just to continue to educate me on on their challenges, their opportunities, the way they're functioning, things like that. So I really looked at at the first 90 days is just to accelerate my my learning as fast as possible. Obviously, you want to get to the point where you're not just learning, but you're contributing and making a difference to those people, how they operate and how the organization operates. So I focus on understanding the people here, how they work, what drives them, what what irritates them on some instances, understanding our financial situation and how well we're doing. But that which was gratefully helpful that I joined the county right in the middle of your budget throw. So I had sort of a firsthand view on that, the strategy that that is currently in place and how it's being implemented. And then ultimately, I'd like to understand the culture of the organization because that's obviously keenly important. It was one of the things, quite frankly, that brought me here. So building some relationships, obviously with with each of of you as members of council, the executive team, our staff throughout the organization. It's been, again, refreshing to to walk the halls of a building and see an incredible group of people collaborating and working so well together. And I think that will come through in in some of the the next slides. I look at and what you'll see throughout this presentation and as you get to know me more, there's two things that I focus largely on is alignment and clarity. I like things to be aligned internally. I like people to understand the direction that we're going in, the role they play in achieving that, their purpose here. So alignment is 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 of keen interest to me. Clarity is the second thing that I focus on. We've been looking at a number of things to try to just clarify people's roles, the direction, their purpose here. It's it's something that I find if if people don't have a good understanding of of what's expected of them and the direction that we're collectively heading in, then they won't be performing to their highest. So those two areas I try to understand tremendously over those first 90 days. And then as we start to, you know, evolve from the the understanding to the the being understood part, you'll start to see more and more of me implementing more things that will continue to drive alignment and clarity. And you'll see that in in our future slides. And then last, continuing to build the team. We have an outstanding team of people here. The executive group is one of the best group of people that I've ever had the privilege of working with. They really are. They're not only exceptional at what they do and bring exceptional skills to the table, but they're exceptional people. And generally, when you have that combination in your executive team, you can do exceptional things. And I think we truly have an opportunity to hear to do something very unique and very special. So looking beyond, one of the one of the elements of where we'll be going is is what I classify as just the environment here. And it leads to what the culture is, but it's setting an environment that's positive. That, you know, one of my jobs, and I had this discussion actually with someone just the other day on our team, is part of what I view my job is to is to make their life easier. If there's roadblocks, I will help clear them. And if we can't clear them, then I will help manage them. So setting that environment, setting that positive outlook, I think, is a is a key step of of an organization and how it performs well. Communication, which is again, what you'll see, we'll talk about this in a lot more detail in the future slide, but communication is key. It's obviously key on again clarity, so people understand what's expected of them. I don't think you can ever communicate to your folks well enough. The C O update that that you receive every week, I think, is a tremendous tool for us to be communicating to our people. And we've tried to, we will continue to to elaborate and expand on on that tool. The intranet, I know Catherine and I have had a number of discussions about continuing to expand the use of that and how our our team can access that information there because it's a it's a tremendous opportunity for us to have that information sort of collectively all in one place. Planning, you'll see that one of the priority projects that I am going to recommend to council that we undertake in the very near future is a review of our mission and our vision and our values, and then develop a comprehensive strategic plan with with some detailed action items for the remainder of of council's term. And I will be recommending that, as I said, we undertake that sooner rather than later to again, set that direction for the organization and and just, I think it would be very valuable for council as well as the executive team, as well as all our employees to revisit the mission, vision and values. I know over the past year or two, there's been some fairly significant challenges throughout the organization. And I think reviewing those and recommitting to those, I think, would go a long way to just solidifying that team and and the direction that we're headed in. I think in under the the concept of managing, I think, and this was alerted to on the previous screen as well, is continuing to build that team and that collaborative effort. Inclusive decision making, I think it came as a bit of a surprise to our executive team when, you know, I was asking them what they thought about certain things or where they thought we should go with certain initiatives or directions. Again, that's an incredible group of people. They're very experienced in not only their fields, but in in management, their leadership, their leadership skills. So I think working collaboratively together, council witnesses that every council meeting where you see them present reports, I think continuing to include them in the decision making and even expanding their abilities, their empowerment, I think, would go a long way. Recognizing and appreciating others. Again, you'll, as you get to know me, I reference what mom says a lot. And mom says, always remember to say thank you. I think that goes a long way. If you didn't say thank you when mom did something for you, it wasn't a good day. So I will continue to to impress upon council and the executive team to continue to say thank you. Our people do an incredible job every day and they should be recognized for their efforts. We saw Mr. Ducek provide some details on an award that that we won. Things like that need to be celebrated. You know, Michelle Harris was awarded a leadership award for her efforts in in long term care and seniors programming. I think things like that need to be awarded and recognized because these people pour their heart and souls into everything they do, and it's because they care. So the pillar or what I classify as the pillars of excellence are the six areas that I look at when I look at an organization, leadership being one of them, and that's you can put a little L in front of leadership or a big L. But leadership is one area that I look at. Employee engagement is another thing that I focus on because I'd like to understand just how well our employees are engaged, whether they feel they are part of an organization or whether they're, you know, they don't, which is, I think, again, leads to our productivity and our performance. Financial management obviously is key to any organization. That's how well we're performing, how sound we are with respect to our our financial planning. What I classify as corporate planning and process, and really that gets into the process that we follow on an annual basis that starts with our strategic planning and leads into our annual business planning. And we'll get into a little bit more detail on a future slide with respect to what I think we need to focus on in the coming few months. I look at our customer focus. And our our team will tell you that I'm a little bit funny when it comes to how we define our customer because I'm sure all of you have heard the terms internal customer and external customer. I've asked our team, I said, there is no such thing as an internal customer. We are partners in providing service to our one customer, and that's the people that pay us to serve them. That's who our customer is. We are all partners in providing that service. Some look at it as semantics. I look at it as more of a philosophy. I think we work together. We don't serve each other. We work together to serve the one customer that we have, and that's the people of the community that that entrust us to serve them. So I look at our customers, you know, maybe a little different than some municipal focus. But again, I think that's important as to how we view our customer and how we understand them. And partner relationships, we can't do everything on our own, so we rely on others to help us do various things. We have a number of partners, not only our our municipal partners, but with St. Thomas, with health units, with larger contracts that we have. I think, and I'll get into that a little bit more under that slide, but I think there's some work that we can do to just to provide a little more focus on those contracts and integrate them a little bit more into how we do things and the services that we provide to those communities, given the just the magnitude of the contracts and the importance of the work that those those folks do. So under leadership, one of the things that, again, in keeping with alignment, you'll hear me talk a lot about is external focus and internal alignment. So they go hand in hand. That external focus speaks to our customer and understanding what our customer wants, what they need, the services that council deems are important to our customer. So that's the external side. What I always want to be ensure we do is that we provide value for their dollars. You know, you'll hear a lot of discussions about the cost of services. I would rather those discussions be about the value of the service provided. You know, Counselor Giger, in your comments regarding the library and its performance this morning, I think underlying those comments is a discussion about value. You know, we want to make sure that whatever we invest in, we're providing the very best value to our to our customer so that we can continue to build the trust and confidence that they have in us. That's really what lies behind the external focus side of that equation. The internal alignment is to ensure that we're all moving in the same direction. And that internal alignment, that direction starts with council and setting your strategic plan and your priorities and the actions that we agree upon that we that we can follow and that we can implement to achieve that direction. So again, I think it's important that those two things go hand in hand. That alignment, again, goes through not only our strategy, but you'll see me once we we reestablish that strategic plan. I will talk to council in greater detail about what the structure looks like because depending on what that strategy and that strategic plan and direction look like, there might be some adjustments to our structure. Certainly, we are implementing some new systems now that we may need different ones or newer ones for for other elements. But again, that's driven under the direction that that council sets, the skills that we're looking at. Depending on what the focus is moving forward, we may need to look at different skillsets for for newer areas. As as council is well aware, we're in the midst of recruiting for a director of planning and setting up an entire new planning department because of what we are witnessing externally and that council deemed that that was an important measure to undertake on behalf of of our municipal partners. So we're looking at obviously bringing a completely different type of skillset into the county's four corners. And then obviously the culture, we want to make sure that our culture is one of inclusiveness and and collaborative efforts. So that also follows in that that whole concept of alignment. Again, you'll hear me talk about clarity a lot. I like people to understand what's expected of them. If you want to hold someone accountable to to their work, then you have to start out with with communicating what's actually expected of them. I think Counselor Sloan, you mentioned earlier, you can't manage what you can't measure. And I think that all starts with setting those expectations and then you can and then you can manage them and hold people accountable to them. But you can't do that unless that's communicated communicated from the onset. So when it comes to employee engagement, there's lots of different ways of looking at it. I like to look at things with the five Cs of employee engagement, and that's starting off with caring about people. There's an old slogan in business that if you take care of your people, they will take care of your business. It's that simple. I think that that goes along. Um, I think that that goes a long way and that's not, um, if you want to look at some of your employees like your kids, that's not giving them everything that they want or everything that they need or everything that they ask for. It's treating them fairly and consistently fairly. It's just taking care of your people. You know, it's a simple concept, but it goes a long way. I think connecting with them, and I think this gets back to the level of communication, is engage with them. Have them part of of the process, have them part of what we do here, have them understand why we do it and where council wants uh, the the future of the county to go. Think coach them. We have a tremendous uh, program right now that our our human resources area has in place. It's a training program called manager as coach. Um, I looked through one of the uh, the binders for that and thank you, Jenna, for sharing your your notes from that session. Um, that's a tremendous program. It's uh, it's an element that I think is is not stressed enough in management and that's working with your people. And that's not just having some of the difficult conversations, but that's day to day, just coaching your people and building them for tomorrow. Because obviously one thing that we want to address is, um, is planning for for our future with respect to our people. And yes, some of them may move on, some of them will stay, but we need to make sure that uh, that we're coaching them and and building them for uh, for taking um, steps in in their own careers. I think having them contribute to uh, to the direction again, you know, I think inclusivity, uh, not only on a broader sense, but on a day-to-day sense with respect to the discussions that we have, I think is key. I like walking around the building and and seeing groups of people huddled in the corner, having a chat about a project or a challenge that they have. That to me is exciting. That to me shows us that our team is working together. You know, they value the opinions of of people at all levels of the organization because they feel that they have something to contribute. And I think that's uh, that sends a positive message throughout the organization. And again, congratulate folks. Just say thank you. You know, some people like, uh, you know, parties and balloons, other people just like a quiet thank you. Understand your people and then recognize them appropriately. And yes, you'll see the flip flops there. And if you've followed the C A O updates over the last couple of months, you'll see we implemented a a little program that uh, on the last Friday of every month, we call it flip flop Fridays. It's just to have a little fun one day a month and recognize, um, that, you know, not only that, uh, notwithstanding we take our work very seriously, but you can still have fun doing it. And uh, flip flop Fridays is a, is a a tribute to two people that, um, that created that whole uh, concept of, uh, of just enjoying what you do. So, we embrace the tropical life lifestyle uh, once a month. So if you join us on that last Friday, be prepared to uh, to wear your Hawaiian shirts, wear your floppy hats, wear your flip flops. Uh, the uglier the better, uh, but just embrace the tropical lifestyle and we'll have a little fun, notwithstanding that first uh, flip flop Friday, it snowed like unbelievable amounts. Um, and yes, we had people walking across the parking lot in their Hawaiian shirts and their summer sundresses. But we still had uh, had an incredible day and uh, and people really enjoyed it. So we're going to continue that every now and then we'll mix up what flip flop Friday looks like. But uh, for the most part, it will just be enjoying that that tropical lifestyle because as you get to know me, you'll know that I am not a winter person at all. Uh, I am a tropical person and I uh, I love the 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 summer and the heat and that's what those days are, whether it's snowing or not. So from a financial management perspective, I'd like to talk to council a little bit about uh, the budget committee. I think we have some tremendous opportunities there to evolve that committee from more of a budget committee to a finance committee and engage that group throughout the uh, the year and not just it uh, through the budget or business planning cycle. I think one of the focuses that I will recommend that council starts to turn their mind to is more of a long-range financial planning focus. This came up actually in some of our discussions with respect to uh, the growth reserve that we have and how it uh, can be used. Our finance folks now are working on a policy to manage um, or to suggest to council as to how reserves are managed and things like that. But, um, I think taking a a longer view on on our financial plan and incorporating and and intertwining that with things like our official plan and our infrastructure master plans and our asset management plans, I think would go a long way to ensuring the uh, long-term financial uh, sustainability of the county and ensuring that, um, no matter what comes our way, no matter what challenges we have financially, we're in a good position to deal with it. Um, I will talk to you a little bit more about the business planning framework that uh, that I will recommend that we start to undertake. Uh, and basically it uh, it starts with the strategic planning cycle that we that I'll be recommending that we undertake very soon. Uh, and again, just building a a a more robust financial policies framework. Uh, and again, this is more based on my desire for clarity that I'd like to see policies that guide our uh, how we manage our reserves, how we manage debt, how we manage our assets. Things like that, they all connect, but they're all tied into that long-range financial plan and how uh, council would like to see us move forward with respect to managing our financial sustainability. But again, I'd like to see some, um, some clarity in those policies so that collectively, again, we all understand where uh, where we're headed. From a corporate planning uh, and process, um, I will, I will recommend that we implement what I classify as a continuous management cycle. That's on a future slide when we get to what the next little while looks like. But what I've talked to the executive team about is I'm going to ask you a series of questions over the next um, number of months and into next year, but we'll start with what do we do? And yes, some of those folks looked at me like I was from Mars when I asked them, what exactly do you do? But I think it's a good question. If you understand what exactly do you do, then you can start to understand what resources that you need to do it. So, uh, when I speak about at what level, I mean, what level of service do we provide? And I think this gets to some of the comments from councillor Gare this morning with respect to the library performance is that we want those types of decisions to be intentional from council. We want those those debates or those considerations at the council table so that we know um, where the resources should be um, directed, whether they be financial or or human. So we're going to start off with understanding what we do and at what level we do it at, when we get to what resources are required. What I've told the executive team is that in the very near future, once we establish that strategic direction from council, we will be looking at uh, understanding your capacity. So what that looks like is looking at your processes and your projects, understanding your processes first because those are what you follow every day to provide the services that county and the community expects from us. So understand what exactly does it take to do that? Because it doesn't make any sense for us to say that we can undertake these five, six, 10 projects if we can't. So I like to see a plan put forward to council when it comes to the business plan and the budget that's not only uh, sustainable, not only financially responsible, but we can actually deliver it. Not just because we may have, you know, more financial resources than what we actually have human resources to deliver a plan. I don't believe the money is burning a hole in our pocket. So if we can't actually deliver it, then why would it be part of the plan? So that discussion starts with understanding your capacity. When we, when we get to the next question, we start to look at how well we're performing. So the way I look at that is some simple performance metrics that give us a good understanding of how we impact our customer or how we impact our bottom line. If it doesn't speak to either one of those, then it's probably not worth looking at because those are the two things that matter most, how we impact our customer and how we impact the finances or what we expect from our customer when it comes to our revenues. So we'll look at performance metrics that speak to those two areas primarily. Secondary to that, we'll start to look at some diagnostics as to understanding why we're performing at that level. And then the last question, and what I've told our executive team is you have to answer the first number of questions before you get to the last question because I'm going to ask you ultimately, how do you make it better? How do you improve it? I worked for a gentleman a number of years ago that used to say a 10% reduction is the do nothing plan. That sent a very clear message. Is a 10% reduction was the do nothing plan. And let me reassure you that he was never about just doing nothing. So generally you were looking for more than 10%. And he used to always say, and I don't want you to cut staff training or or staff education or career development. Because if we want people to work smarter, we have to make them smarter. So, um, that will be the last question that uh, that I ask everyone is how we make it better, how we improve it? How do we make it better either for our bottom line or for our customer, uh, the way they uh, receive that service? So those are the series of questions that uh, that we will be walking through as part of that business planning process. The last element that I added to this slide was business continuity planning and this, um, came up actually, uh, not too long ago. Uh, when there was some questions regarding uh, just the continuity of services given uh, potential challenges with either labor, labor disruptions or um, I T system shutdown, things like that. I think we need to turn our attention sooner rather than later to having a more comprehensive business continuity plan in place. I also think that this is an area where the council, where the county can play uh, a coordinating role for our local municipal partners, uh, because they may not have the resourcing available to actually put a plan like that in place. And because we all rely on shared services so much throughout the county, I think it would be a prudent thing to do to turn our attention to that sooner rather than later and have that plan in place, um, going forward. And again, as I said, I think it's a an opportunity for us to be a coordinating party with our local municipalities so that everyone is confident that should there be any type of disruption in services that uh, our services to our customer will continue, maybe in a modified form, but they will continue. So when we look at our customer focus, we start with understanding our customer. Um, I think there's always a challenge with respect to uh, working at the county level because you're one that one level more removed from from your customer. At the local municipal level, I'm sure your phones ring more often at a local municipal level than they do at a county level just because you're closer to your residents. Um, so I think that notwithstanding that there's an opportunity for us to reach out to our customers, understand them a little better. Again, work through our local municipal partners to see some of the challenges and opportunities in your respective areas. But just gain a better understanding of of our customer, what they're looking for, what they deem important. I think we do the budget survey that we do. I I read with a lot of interest actually as I was preparing to uh, to come here. I think there's some some value in uh, in that survey, but I think it's something that we may want to look at to provide a little bit um, a little bit better value because I think some of the uh, the information that we're receiving through that process perhaps is not uh, quite as valuable as what it could be, but that's a an opportunity for us to understand our customers a little bit more. I think from an economic development perspective, this obviously starts to get to our relationship with our local businesses. Um, I think there's a tremendous amount of work that we need to do in that area to continue to build those relationships. Uh, I know our economic development, our tourism area has done some outstanding work over the past while. Uh, understanding those businesses, we've got a business retention and expansion program that's underway right now. But, um, I think that that data can be leveraged tremendously to gain that better uh, understanding um, of our of our business community from uh, as a customer. Tourism, again, they're our customers. Perhaps they're not our daily customers, but they could be once a year, they could be once a weekend. But to understand again, um, what they're looking for, what they deem important and incorporate incorporate that in the in the services that we provide wherever we possibly can. And then when I met with a number of of council members, um, the phrase promoting the county came out on a number of occasions. We need to do a better job of promoting what we do and how well we do it. And I think that's key on on continuing to communicate to our customer. A lot of times you understand it's not just communication, it's education. Is that a number of people, you know, don't understand necessarily what a municipal government does versus what a county government does versus what a provincial government does. They phone you guys because you're the first level. So I think if we can go through a bit of a process where we can actually look at promoting what we do, educating our customers on, you know, the services that we provide because we provide them, I think fairly well. You know, in a lot of cases, we run very, very lean. And that's a good thing. It can pose some challenges at times, but I think that we can do a much better job in promoting what we do. So our partner relationships, we have a number of of very significant uh, partner relationships, not only with uh, all of your respective municipalities. Uh, but, um, I think larger contracts as well, but with respect to the shared services with the local municipal partners, I think there's a little bit of effort that we need to do to, uh, again, better define some of those shared services. I know some of them are defined fairly well and that's that's uh, that's good because that again provides clarity and uh, of expectations on both sides. But I think there's a number of them that are still in in their infancy and they're still in their development stage. And the challenge with that is there, there's not a good uh, definition between the two parties as to what the services are that we can provide uh, and what level we can provide them at. So I think it's, um, something, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking right now and we're walking through the recruitment for our director of planning. That will be a very large, um, time consumer for that director when they come on board is to work with each of your respective areas. What can they do? What services are you looking for from a planning perspective so that they can start to round out uh, what that department looks like and the skillsets that they bring on. So uh, again, I think that we can continue to build those relationships and and define them a little better. From our paramedic services and our social services, obviously those are two very large contracts that impact our community tremendously. Uh, I'd like to actually integrate those more in the day-to-day and the ongoings of our of our, um, of our county. I've had some discussions with uh, with Metavi as far as our paramedic services start to bring uh, get them in front of council more often, more performance metrics on how well you're doing, how well, um, the services provided to the community, not that there's any concerns with that. I just feel that this contract is so significant to the 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 well-being of our community that it needs more light cast upon it and council should be more educated on the the service that they're providing. What is our community facing with respect to their health and well-being? Um, you know, again, from our social services, we had the one presentation from uh, from our social services partners in St. Thomas, this is a tremendous amount of information there. But I think there's an opportunity to have that information in front of council, I think, more often than just simply once a year. And so, and I think again, to gain a better understanding of the challenges of that our community is facing. The community safety and well-being plan, I think, is, um, is one initiative, um. And I won't comment on other initiatives from provincial level, but it's one initiative from the provincial level that I think is actually, you know, very, very valuable. Uh, it it provides a tremendous opportunity for us to understand the challenges that are impacting our community on a safety and well-being level and proactively trying to address them. You know, we all hear about the cost of of healthcare or the cost of policing and things like that. Wouldn't it be nice if we're, there were things that we could undertake as a community that would relieve the need for increasing healthcare or increasing policing? I think that's the the core of what that, that whole initiative was meant to do is understand those challenges so that you can address them at their at their very start, understand what their, the uh, the core, um, impetus is behind those issues. You know, I joined Warden Ketchabah at the at the community safety and well-being integration table. What a tremendous amount of data being shared there. It's like, uh, just a, a, you can't even imagine the amount of data that's available there. My question is, how can we use it? What can we do to actually incorporate that into our day-to-day work to improve our community and make those those resulting impacts on our healthcare system or on our policing system less necessary? So I think there's some tremendous opportunities there and continue to work with that table, um, to uh, to address those issues, but before they become uh, the bigger issues that we need to react to. So enablers to excellence, what I classify these are as communications and technology. And as I, as I described off the start, the six pillars I view more as vertical, not completely isolated from one another. They do overlap in some circumstances. But enablers to excellence, I look at more as horizontal because they're woven throughout the six pillars. If you improve your communication, you will do a better job at leadership. You will do a better job at manage, of working with your partners. You will do a better job at engaging your employees. So communications, I think, will be a a significant focus of mine over the coming uh, year or two. Uh, I think we should understand, undertake a a communication strategy, what that looks like, how we can uh, bolster our communications effort at a county level. Catherine and I have already started to have some of those discussions, what that looks like. Um, I think our executive team has learned by now, I'm a stickler for consistency in corporate branding. Our email signatures was the first thing that I said, please fix. Because I like our organization to look professional, it should be consistent, um, no matter what it is, whether it's business cards, whether it's PowerPoint presentations, whether it's email signatures, they should have a consistent, professional look to. It sends a positive message to our customers that that's what we are, that's our philosophy, that's the way we approach what we do. So I think consistency in corporate branding, you will see a continued stress on that. From a technology uh, perspective, again, if you can do a better job on your tech From a technology uh perspective, again, if you can do a better job on your technology. You will do a better job on the other pillars of of excellence. If we can leverage systems. To not only make our own work more efficient. But to provide better information for council to make more informed data driven decisions. I think that's a good thing. So we will focus a lot moving forward on our technology and how we can leverage those systems. We have one in place right now, Dayforce, that is more of a human resource system. The amount of data that's contained in that is tremendous. I think we've we've gotten to a point where we've worked a few bugs out, we're starting to be able to leverage that data. And you'll see that coming forward in the coming few months that where we'll start to actually present more of our human resources type data. Um, we've had some discussions in the implementation of Questica, our new financial system is is starting. Uh, I have experience with that system in in a previous life. It is a tremendously powerful system that will provide. Uh, us internally in council with a lot of information with respect to managing our finances. Not only on a day to day sort of budget planning, but that long range financial planning, again, there's an element in there. That uh that we will draw upon to start to um provide counsel with. Uh, just better data when it comes to our uh our financial uh information. It also will make our own lives a lot easier. Uh, tying spreadsheets together when you've got ten, twenty, thirty spreadsheets is never fun. And that coming from an engineer that, you know, I live and breathe as spreadsheets, but um. Managing your financial system with spreadsheets. Is not a fun way of doing things. So this will actually tie all that information together for our departments. And provide that information at their fingertips will be, which will be a tremendous benefit for us. So just a couple of things on on the external side, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail on this. Because uh council is is well aware of of the challenges that we face uh externally, but I think there's um. There's a role that I see the county playing in in these four items as well as a number of others from a more strategic perspective. I think that's a common thread that I look at when I started to list out just these four. I think what's, what can the county's role be in growth management? What can it be in infrastructure planning and and coordination? Now, so when I start to look at what the county's role can be, I think it's important that we have some of those discussions with council. As far as what councils thoughts are on on the role that we need to play and then define that role a little clearer. Again, getting back to my my obsession with alignment and clarity. I think it's important that some of these larger, more external factors. There's some discussion around the council table and with the executive team as to how well we can um. We can help our municipal partners in these areas and what role that uh that it would be best. And most beneficial for our municipal partners that the county plays in doing this. So our plan for twenty twenty four um. And I'm not going to go through all the points on on this slide. This is the continuous management cycle. That I've introduced to our our executive team. This is what I believe we follow on a on an annual basis. It starts in the upper left quadrant with strategic planning. That's where I think we should begin is uh collaboratively on on. Re identifying that plan or or redefining it or frankly, starting again and and building a new plan for the remainder of council's term. It leads into the upper right quadrant into our annual planning. So obviously, we take that strategic direction is set by council. And we incorporate that into our annual planning so that we're advancing those priorities. We're addressing the action items and the initiatives that council believes will uh. Realize that strategic plan. It then moves into measuring, monitoring and assessing results. So that's the performance metrics area of things. And if you think about the series of questions that I had on a previous slide, a few back. You'll see that they all start to work into these quadrants. So again, once we have that annual plan in place, we will start to measure how well we're doing. And then that moves into our report, performance reporting where we'll not only be. Reporting on a regular basis to council on the financial uh situation and the financial performance of the organization. But that will evolve to the performance of the organization. So financial data, once we have that system up and running uh is will be quite. Easy to draw upon, the performance data takes a little bit, a little bit more effort, a little bit uh, a little bit longer to put in place. Because we actually need to start to put those processes in place as to how we measure performance. Because what we don't want it to be is just a once a, once a month. You know, putting numbers in a box to say that I did it. We actually want those performance metrics to be valuable. We want them to be valuable for us internally to measure our business and and valuable for council. To build that trust and confidence that the organization is functioning as you intended it for. So that's the cycle that uh that we'll be implementing at the executive team and throughout the organization. Um, and then will be, this will take probably a good couple of years before it's in place and fully operating. Uh, but that's uh, that will be the direction that we're heading in. So uh, the uh immediate steps that I'll recommend to council is build the cornerstones. So that's reviewing our mission, our vision and our values. Uh, I think, as I said earlier, I think given some of the challenges that that the organizations had over the past year or two. I think this would go a long way in uh in reestablishing our direction and our commitment to the way. Um, that we want the county itself as an organization to conduct itself. So I think that that will be step one. I think tied into that is to redevelop your strategic plan. Um, and the priorities that you'd like to see in that plan. And working collaboratively with the executive team to identify specific action items that will deliver on those priorities. And then implementing our business planning cycle this year. So we will start. Directly after council finalizes its strategic plan, we will start with that annual planning cycle. Um, so I've had those discussions with the executive team. Uh, they're aware that that's the process that uh that I was going to be speaking to council about today. Uh, so that is where I I think we are and where I think we need to go, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. So Warden, I'll turn things back over to you.
Well, thank you very much for that, Blaine. There was a, it's quite the presentation, a lot of information there. Does anyone have any questions or comments uh? For Blaine at this time? Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Not so much a question, but a comment. I I'm very excited for the future.
Perfect. Perfect. Anyone else? I know there's more to come. Okay, well, thank you for that, Dan.
Resolved that the presentation titled "The First Ninety Days and the Path Forward" "From the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk" dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Sloan. And Counselor Jagir. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Brings us to section seven, uh, council correspondence, seven one items for consideration. Seven one one, request from Elder Abuse Elgin to hold a flag raising on June eleventh. Twenty twenty four, the County of Elgin in recognition of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Anyone wish to speak to that? Fairly straightforward. We did this last year. Uh, I believe. Wear purple. Okay.
Resolved to the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Support the request from Elder Abuse Elgin to hold a flag raising on June eleventh, twenty twenty four. And proclaim June fifteenth, twenty twenty four as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Noble. And Counselor Latham. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Seven one two, request from Jody uh Marison to declare intimate partner violence an epidemic in Elgin County. Long piece of correspondence, uh, any comments? Anyone wish to speak to this? Counselor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Warden. I'd like to speak to it. I think we should support this um. Unfortunately, in twenty twelve, our family was a victim of this kind of violence resulting in a death. Still think of it every day. It affects the whole family and it never, never stops. Um, I don't know if there's a good answer to some of the solutions, because I know at the time we had things in place, but the. Unfortunately, the laws and the courts are flawed. I don't know the answer to it, but they, I don't know what the answer is. But um, Blaine spoke to the Community Safety Program, and I think we should, you know, support this on that behalf too and. Just see what we can do um. But I would support this because we've had some local tragedies too and. It's not getting any better. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone else? Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, just a few comments. Uh, first of all, the the town of Elmer did support this uh uh. Request a couple of uh meetings ago. I um, I noticed in the. And the the resolution calls for declaring this as an epidemic and people sometimes argue with the idea that, you know, an epidemic is the wrong word to use. But I think it's it's fairly appropriate because it brings to the fore the. The amount of of harm that has been done by uh abusers uh. Especially family abusers. And I noticed they do include some of the statistics from the Elmer Police, which uh. Uh, the the response to family issues is the second highest response that the police respond to. The first one is really mental uh abuse of some sort, uh, mental illness of some sort. Um, third comment I really have is that every time I look at this kind of situation. Uh, as a male, um. Feel kind of, you know, you felt kind of guilty about your gender that this kind of thing happens. Uh, especially um with males as the perpetrators and you talk of, you know, the the letter talks about. People who have died at the hands of their abusers in Elgin County. I'm not sure what the statistics are for that. Um, but then to certainly, certainly something that uh. Uh, we should become more and more aware of. And so, you know, I said, I feel feel uh apologetic about my gender for doing this. However. There is, there are some statistics and I'm not sure whether to relate to Elgin County. Or whether it's a larger geographic area. When I look at the stats, uh, we should also remember that. Uh, the uh, when you look at female victims. The amount of female victims in in the statistics that are shown here has actually gone down a little bit. And the nu- the number of male victims has gone up. We tend to forget that males are also victims of, of, you know, of. Family abuse, but it's. The number is certainly against female victims are higher, so they certainly do support the the resolution to this effect.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, Deputy Warden, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Warden. Yeah, I I would fully support this initiative. Obviously, the stats speak for themselves that Elgin County has a problem. And we need to help deal with that problem.
Well, thank you for that. I think it's a a problem across the province, if not the country, perhaps the continent. And uh, I certainly appreciate Counselor Cookett's uh comments and recognition that. This is an intimate partner. Issue. You know, I I don't mean it that way, but I'm saying it's it's though it is predominantly. Perhaps more focused on towards the female side, but it is, it does include the male side as well. So. As an inclusive community. I think we should address this. Counselors, you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments and and just add that um. Well, first off, I I agree the solution is is not obvious. But uh, a first step towards those solution is awareness. So doing this gesture just raises the level of awareness. And that's where uh the solutions begin. Um, I also often talk about, you know, municipalities and and what's our role and staying in our lane. And um, I think this is perfectly appropriate for a municipality to to tackle because. It's it's a complex issue that actually touches many of the services. Uh, we talked about social services, the health unit, we talked about issues of substance abuse and. Uh, it touches on education, it touches on so many aspects where we can have influence. And community well being, safety, policing, you know, you name it. So this is perfectly appropriate. It's not a statistic to be proud of, um, but it's one that we should tackle together.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone else? From staff's perspective, I will ask either you, Catherine, and or Blaine, uh, by simply approving this resolution. Do you think that's far enough? Do you want a proclamation? What's, what's envisioned?
I do think that uh it's probably appropriate to approve the resolution. That was what was requested and I believe that was what was done in the city.
Thank you. Fair enough. Thank you. Okay, please read the motion.
Resolved to the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin, declare intimate partner violence an epidemic in the County of Elgin.
We'd look for a mover and seconder. Counselor Whitner. And Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Seven one three, request from the Elgin Children's Foundation to declare June eighth, twenty twenty four as Lemonade Day in Elgin County. Anyone wish to speak to this? Yes, Deputy Warden, please.
Yeah, I have no problem supporting it. I I think it's a great initiative, trying to raise a little bit of money and. Um, haven't seen a lemonade stand quite a while, so.
Yes. Okay, with nothing further than uh Catherine, please.
Resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Support the request from the Elgin Children's Foundation to proclaim June eighth, twenty twenty four as Lemonade Day in Elgin County.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble. Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That's carried. Seven point two, the consent agenda. Guess uh, we have five pieces of correspondence. I will speak to uh seven two four. I know I was contacted by members of the Federation of Agriculture regarding the letter from the Minister Thompson. Uh, regarding, what do they call that? A rain tax. You know, and I'll I'll be quite honest, I, this one took me by surprise. I was not aware that such an initiative was out there until uh the agricultural round table. And it was uh quite prominent, uh, an issue brought forward. And I understand Blaine's been quite involved in uh the rain tax. So we have a an expert around the table here. Um, of course, the minister is asking us to be very cognizant of the impacts. On the, on. Our agricultural producers. Any piece of correspondence here that anyone wants to discuss further or ask questions of? Yes, Deputy Warden Jones.
Uh, the the rain tax is uh something that's going to be more of a concern as we grow. Subdivisions going out into farmland and you have municipal drains and.
Right.
Concerns our farmers are having with how we manage. Uh, cost recovery for municipal drains and stormwater management. So it's going to be. A learning curve, I believe, in how we manage this as a municipality and uh county and lower tier.
I would agree with you, particularly uh the, shall we? All for what it is, climate change, uh, the advent of larger uh events, uh. You know, a lot of our systems were designed for one inch rainfall events over twenty four hours and now we're getting two inches an hour. And our infrastructure just can't handle it. Oh, yeah. Going to be interesting. Anyone else?
Resolved that correspondence items number seven point two point one to seven point two point five be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan. Counselor Hent will second. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to section eight, other business. Eight one, statements, inquiries by members. Eight point two, notice of motion. Eight point three. Any matters of urgency? Brings us to section nine, closed meeting items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act. To discuss the following matters under Municipal Act, section two thirty nine two. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, April ninth, twenty twenty four. Closed meeting item number two, collective bargaining update. Under section D, labor relations or employee negotiations. And closed meeting item number three, the first ninety days and the path forward. Under section B, personal matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local. under section B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
Mover and second, please. Counselor Noble? Counselor Whitner will second. All in favor? That is carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report?
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and second, please. Counselor Noble? Uh, Counselor Latham? All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the April ninth, twenty twenty four, closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and second, please. Counselor Sloan? Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? It's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that the confidential report dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, from the Director of Human Resources and the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received for information.
Mover and second? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number three.
Resolved that the confidential report from the Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be received for information.
Mover and second, Counselor Whitner and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Section eleven, motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and second, Deputy Warden Jones, Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? It's carried. Section twelve, consideration of the bylaws.
Bylaw number twenty four fifteen, notice bylaw, being a bylaw to establish a policy respecting the circumstances and manner in which notice is provided to the public. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four fifteen be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and second, Counselor Latham and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried.
Bylaw number twenty four sixteen, confirmation, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the April thirtieth, twenty twenty four meeting. Resolved that bylaw number twenty four sixteen be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and second, please. Counselor Noble? And Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That's carried. Which brings us to section thirteen, adjournment motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at twelve oh one P M to meet again on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four at nine o'clock A M.
Mover and second, Counselor Whitner? Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for joining us this morning and have a good day.